Dr. Simmons, are we ready? Okay. Yes, but that's going to be for the six o'clock meeting, me for the after the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Welcome to the public hearing number two on House Bill 581. Today is January 28th. The meeting is starting at 6:00 PM. I want to make sure that we have everybody present. When your district is called, please respond by saying present. District one, present. District two?
Present.
District three?
Present.
District four?
Present.
District five?
Present.
We have a quorum. Now it's time for the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to item number two, the adoption of the agenda?
So moved that we adopt the agenda as presented, Mr. Chair, or if there are any alteration or to the, the, you know what I'm saying, I could lost the word, to the agenda.
Yes, sir. It's been properly motioned to accept the adoption of the agenda. Is there a second?
Our second.
It's been second by Mr. Register of the second. All in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero. Public hearing number two, House Bill 581 opt out. All right, we're now ready for public, no, I'm sorry, ready for Mr. Jones to our presentation. Mr. Byron Moneybag Joe Jones will come and give us our presentation.
Thank you for that generous introduction. Good evening, board members.
Evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
In public, this is actually our second public hearing on House Bill 581 tonight. I want to go ahead and tell you, I tried my best to kind of chop the power port down a little bit, so when we go through it, the other one was requested by the board to be posted online. It is posted online, linked up along with the previous live presentations, so that's still out there. So again, this is public hearing number two here tonight. Going straight to our roadmap to success, again, this is year number three of Dr. Simmons' vision for the school district, and I'll show this just because anything, when you're dealing with revenue, needs to tie back to instructional improvement, and a lot of this stuff, leadership, teaching, and learning, reading it from the bottom up, we need to arrive at student achievement, and we do that through operational efficiency and non-instructional resources that we try to reduce, and we talked a little bit about that last time, and some of our budget reductions for FY '25. So some background information, again, this is more of a bullet point form versus some verbiage last time. This is actually effective now, January 1st, 2025. In the legislative session last year, there was an agreement to put this on the ballot in November. It was overwhelmingly adopted by Spalding County. Citizens did vote in favor of it. That is the truth, and basically statewide, the same, same thing, as far as that kind of a majority. What it is, is a statewide homestead exemption that will essentially cap an assessment increase. So for example, I'll show you an example here in just a minute. If you've got $100,000 house, and you would normally have a 10% increase, and it'd go up to 110, but you're, you're limited to an inflationary factor of 4%, then it'll be valued at 104,000. And if we keep it kind of simple like that, it's a lot easier for the public to understand. Third bullet point, it could be said, we'll talk about it in a second, that it limits growth based on the previous year's inflation rate. You know, we'll talk about how some of our expenses with the school board may increase at an inflationary rate that we can't control, whether that's 4, 5, 6, 7%. If you come in here one year, and the state caps the inflation at 1%, you always have tough decisions to make, but you definitely will have some then, whether that's raising the millage rate, whether that's cutting additional expenses, which we should be looking hard at our budgets anyway, which we do, but that will be, that will have more scrutiny going forward. Boards of education do have the option to opt out of the legislation. You do have to have public input, which again, three public hearings, second one tonight. You have to advertise properly under some strict guidelines in your legal organ, and we'll talk about that in a second, and you have to have it on your website. You basically have to do everything you can to give the public an in point, a chance to have input on this, and then you culminate with a board resolution, has to be delivered by March 1st to the Secretary of State's office. And we talked last time, I don't know that we'll be mailing that resolution if adopted, we may be hand delivering it where the mail goes, sort of make sure it's timely received. Another key point here, bottom, future boards of education, this is it. Whatever decision this board makes, future boards of education are held to it. You will not have the opportunity to undo the decision. Now, with a future legislative session, come in and try to do something against that and change it, when there's already speculation now that some, some of the folks in the North Georgia that's on my GAZBO group that have talked, I know that there's, there may be some other things proposed in this legislature, but that's just hearsay, in my opinion, at this point, we haven't seen anything in writing. It's just important to, to understand, it's a big decision. If you opt in, which you're in right now, the decision is to opt out. If you do nothing, you're opted in. Homeowners could see a reduction in their taxes, and we talked about this last time. Two thirds of the property tax bill, it don't matter what county you in, out of 100, of the school board counties, 180 in the, in the state, 60 something percent of that tax bill is going to be for school taxes, and that's why it's always such an important issue when we have public turnout for this type of discussion. Second bullet, revenue reductions, you know, we would need to look at the millage rate. The millage rate, I think, has been 16.742 for the last five years. We have a cap of 20 in the state of Georgia, the school systems, unless you get legislative approval above that, which is one of these other bullet points that is down in the bottom. You know, I'll show you a slide in a minute while that's really important, to keep that three point something, 3.2 discretionary decision above to get to the cap, and why that's so important. The value of one mill is about 2.5 million here in the county. When we look at our five-year tax digest, it's a little over 40, 40 something million dollars, 42 million dollars, and that's not just assessment growth, that's new growth, total taxation, and we don't necessarily get that. We also have to consider the tax fee we pay the county for collection of the taxes, plus uncollectibles, delinquent accounts, or somebody that may be on a payment plan, it's worked out something where we may get that revenue in future years. And then bottom bullet point, their, property taxes are definitely essential for the sustainability of the board education. Revenue is going to come from, from the state, which is a little over 60 million for Spalding County right now, and that's based pretty solely on enrollment growth or decline. We've been declining in, in Spalding County really long before I even came here in 2020. So we really need to find a way to attract students to come to Spalding County. That will self-correct some of the stuff, but if it's either that or property taxes, splosh taxes, which you, which the county voted in 2023 for a new splosh, those are restricted funds, so they have to be used for a little bit different purpose for capital outlay. So those are your main revenue sources. Again, I took a lot of the verbiage off this, I'll run through these right quick. Ad blorum tax, property tax, those terms are a lot of times interchangeable, so your property tax bill that you get in or around the November due time, sometimes with an extension, it's going to have multiple, either municipality, county, or school system taxed on that total bill. Certified tax digest, Ms. Hollins will take that to Atlanta to get that thing certified somewhere in the August, September timeframe. Levying authority, you're the levying authority here, so you have the ability to have the hearings on your regular millage rate, et cetera, and then take a vote to approve, adopt millage rate. One mill, again, is 2.5 million dollars here in Spalding. Millage rate 16.742, it's been that way for about five years now. When you hear the term millage equivalent, if you'll look at that and jump down to the bottom bullet point, you have a current millage rate. This year we're in right now, we could have rolled the millage rate back 0.713 of one mill to tax folks at 16.029. Okay, that's, when you see that, that's the difference in those two numbers. Net assessed value kind of goes along with the value of a mill, 2.5, and recommending authority and levying authority, those two are a little bit interchangeable, so you, normally when you're doing millage rate, you will adopt a millage rate. We will ask the county to ratify that at one of their upcoming board of commissioner meetings, so we are tied in with the county as well before it actually gets to go to Atlanta to be ratified. So let's talk a little bit about opt in. So I think the board asked me to look at, look at some pros and cons. Pros, again, there's nothing to hide about this, the homeowner property tax relief would, if everything stayed constant and the assessments were capped, they would see some relief on that. And number two, it was voted on by the citizens, that is absolutely true. Limits on inflationary increases for homesteaded property, again, that going along with the fourth bullet, the consumer price index, the most recent value was about 4.1%. So again, if your house, if you're on an assessment, reassessment timeline, and you jump from 100 to 130, in the future, you would jump from 100 to 104.1. So again, just trying a simple example. Some cons on that for the board, your decision-making authority would be challenged, you would need to keep in mind, you do have a 20-mill cap, so if you're trying to replace the same amount of revenue, over multi-years, you will get to 20. So it's not really a short-term problem for this board of education. You have a fund balance, and Hope told you that in the last meeting, about 45 million dollars. I mean, this, this is not a one-to-two-year issue, this is a long-term concern. Ability to combat expense inflation, if your expenses outpace the consumer price index, you have something to be concerned about. I want to remind you, when we get funded from the state, we, we take FTE counts in October and March, and that money follows in arrears the next year. So we could be having a good year, good budget, and then turn around, and we have to, we, we've planned visionary things, and we got to turn around, and oops, we're going to lose 500 grand. Each, each child's worth about $5,000 to the board of education for enrollment. You cannot reverse the decision, long-term financial health. Also, you know, I think the county, and I don't want to say this wrong, I think the county does have, have a few more options than the school system does, they have a chance to have an additional sales tax. I don't know all the details on that, that's what I've been told in my reading, or in my reading, and, you know, they don't, I don't believe they have a cap on their millage rate either. And so, I guess it's sometimes not concerning to me, but I wonder, when the legislation was written, why did they give an option to opt out if it's concerning to opt out? Why was that even given as an option? That's one thing. Second thing, why was the board of education not given a chance to up their cap? Those are two things that I don't know the answer to, but it still, you know, goes into my thought when I'm trying to present to you. Again, your millage rate cap here is at 20. I went over this slide last time, I put a little verbiage at the top where it would read a little easier, current revenue, I'm in the middle column, current revenue from a homesteaded property, 22.3 million. If you read from left to right, at a 4.1% cap, your revenue this year would have been 21.1 million, and you, we would have had, would have had to come up with 1.2 million additional dollars, which means that the current millage rate, it probably would have needed to go to 17.5 or somewhere in that range, at an average of 2.5 million dollars per mill. And again, I'm just trying to use easy math. This template was provided to us from legal resources throughout the state, financial planners, Ms. Hollins was instrumental in helping me get this data. I'm sure the county's got some, some data like this on theirs as well, but you can see over a multi-year period, this is a $9 million-plus impact. So if this had have been going on since 2018, 19, 20, the millage rate would have probably gotten to 20 by now, or something else would have changed in the spending or whatever the situation, there would have had to be some different decisions. Again, at the bottom, 7,692 properties is the number that I've been told that this affects in Spalding County that have a homestead exemption or homestead property. This is another simple example, I've already kind of talked about this, I hope it doesn't read too busy. 100,000 on the left, normal, that's your value. I'm on the third bullet, at a millage rate of 16.742, you would have paid 669.68. If you go over to the right at 104.1, I'm on the third bullet point, at a millage rate of 16.742, the taxes would be 697.14, so that would have been about, you know, 30, approximately 30 bucks or so, that you would go up in this scenario. And I, and the fourth, the fourth line was just to show you, if we were rolling back, it would have been 641, and then there's a difference, so that the slide may read a little busy, you'll focus only on the third dollar amount. 669, 697, under a consumer price index of 4.1. I hope that makes sense to you, what I'm saying. So let's go to the second one. The second example is what you're used to seeing, same exact 100, 130, third bullet, 669.68 on the left, on 100 grand, 130 over to the right would be 870. So that property tax, this is not considered exempt, extra senior, this, that, and other, and all that stuff, this is just a straight-up example, because your individual situation may impact it a little bit differently. So 669.68 versus 870, so what's that, about $200? So that's, let's go back, so that's 200, and this was going to be about 30. And that's annual, that's not monthly, that's an annual increase divided by 12. All right, so a few more, we're about to be done here, a few more items to consider. Future, future vision and superintendent, budget vision, outlooks, what is it we want to accomplish in Spalding County? Where do we want to be in three to five years, 10 years, not just one year? Budget shortfalls, we've already kind of talked about that, and listen, we get mandatory salary and benefit increases, we talked about this last time, and I hope it's online, people were able to hear that. You know, if somebody chooses a health insurance, it used, I mean, when I started, it was like $69 a month to match on somebody. Now it's $21,000 a year. So if you choose the health insurer, that's what the board is obligated to pay on your behalf. And then when there's salary increases that come down for certified, we have a decision to make, do you pass on an incremental increase to your classified and your custodians and your other hard-working folks, or do you just make the decision to pass it on to certified? Because the state's not really articulating what you do with the other, with the local money. School improvement, recruitment, you know, we've talked about this with our fund balance of 45 million, we have a strategic plan to bring that down. I think we budgeted this current year about four, four and a half million to pay retention supplements to our certified staff, our teacher folks, that, that are committed to staying in Griffin Spalding. So for example, again, if, if Ms. Battle looks at that data, and somebody's been in Spalding County 20 years, and I may not say this exactly right, they might be eligible up to like a $7,000 a year increase that will continue to recur as long as we adopt it in the budget every year. If you've only been here two years, it's going to be dramatically, it might be $500. So we're encouraging people to stay in Griffin Spalding, and you don't get that by moving to Griffin Spalding, and you got 20 years somewhere else, and you got one here, and you start on 21. That's, that's correct for teacher retirement, but for this increase, year on year one. So that will bring our fund balance down, is what I'm getting at. Future legislative sessions, we talked a little bit about that already, we, we don't know what will come out of that. Enrollment is declining, as we've talked about before, we're still under 10,000. I think if you exclude pre-K, we're under 9,000, it's somewhere in that range though. Ongoing risk, one-time decision, majority of school systems are, are going to choose to opt out. I looked at a schedule today, 90% is probably, 85 to 90 is probably a safe estimate on the whole chart of the whole state of what I've been able to gather, that they will admit to, that's what they're planning to do. Again, as I told you, I'm on that GAZBO board, out of 15 of us folks, I think one's not going to opt out, and it's because they've got something in that county that raises revenue, military base, some other funding, power plant, that they're not solely relying on the property tax base. So here's our five-year tax digest, bottom right figure, third, third item up, 42 million, that's what I was referring to earlier. These percentages at the bottom, that's total taxation, that's not assessment increases, that's new growth, et cetera. Here's a trend of your millage rate for the last 10 years. I had to quit using 14, 13, and 12 at the top, but it was 19 point something when I first came to the county, when I was including those years. So you've already been there one time, close to that. And these are advertisements, we did complete this properly on January 4th, these are all Saturday newspapers, January 18th, which is when this meeting was also advertised, and there'll be another one coming out on February 1st, to talk about our February 11th, four o'clock public hearing, we'll invite the public to come back to that as well. We also issued a press release, this is also on the front page of our website with links that you can look at these documents, plus it's on the finance page as well, so there's two pages on the website. And our timeline in bold, that's tonight, with one more public hearing to go, a recommendation to opt out at the 4:30 work session, and then we're going to try to get that done on February 17th, if the board chooses, so we'll meet that, that timeline. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
All righty, thank you so much. Board members, we have heard the presentation from Mr. Byron Jones on House Bill 581 to opt out. Are there any questions that board members may have for Mr. Jones at this time? Hearing, okay, we do? All right, Ms. McDonald, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening, Mr. Jones. Does anyone in the room know when we voted on this back in November, what the percentage was of passing in the state by chance?
I think it's around 92%.
What was it?
I think 92% voted yes.
So 30, 62, 38? I, I think I'm really confused about this situation because it's 62% the people voted around the state the way it was presented in writing, and then the legislature or the governor wants school systems to have the ability to opt out, is that correct? Has, has anything like this ever been done before in the state, with the state legislature that anyone, that you're aware of?
Affect taxation, no, and this is year 20 for me, so.
Okay, do you know why it just affects school? I mean, I, I know why it just affects school systems, but.
Yeah, it affects counties as well, but, but they do have, they do have an additional option to raise revenue.
Correct.
Whether, whether it's sales, and again, please, I don't want to say it wrong.
And I know the millage rate, there's no cap on the millage rate, Mr. Davis and I have already discussed that. So I'm sitting here thinking the governor just probably ought to rescind it, and let's just start all over. I, I don't know that I want my name on a vote where it can't be changed, or it can't be, I, I don't know, I have, I have a lot of reservations with this. I do. I mean, I've read, and I've read, and I've read, and I'm still really confused why the state would allow the people of Georgia to vote on something, and it passes, and then within the state legislature, there's a, there's a new rule for the football game. I, I just, that's unprecedented to me.
Like I said earlier, I, and I was just being transparent and vulnerable a minute about, you know, why wasn't there a consideration on millage rate, so you have a different type of decision? Hey, if I can, if I can raise my millage rate above the cap, and so you're still your decision, if you get seven years down the road and you're declining big time, you know, that, you don't have that opportunity.
Because I, I think Ms. Weldon and I were speaking last time we were here, that, you know, I, I vote to opt out, to me, it's not a win, and I vote to continue to opt in, it's not a win. So I, I'm really disturbed that the state would put us in this position, I think is what I'm trying to say, and it really irritates me. It really irritates me, because the people passed it.
Yeah, that's true.
And now we're, now we're kind of going in the barn, the red barn door in the back and trying to, I, I just don't get it. So if somebody can help me understand this and why, please email me or see me after the meeting. I, I don't know, I'm just really kind of torn up about it, but I appreciate your efforts, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
No problem at all. Any other questions coming from members of this body? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Jones. We're now entering the public comments portion. Couple of things I just want to make you aware of for public comments. Any individual deciding to speak is requested to give his or her name, address, and the group, if any, that he or she is presenting. The speaker is expected to address the board, not the audience. The presentation should be as brief as possible, yet should include all information considered important by the speaker. Unless an extension of time is granted, each speaker shall not exceed three minutes. Questions, suggestions, proposal, or criticisms that have been presented verbally should also be submitted when practical in writing, and should be signed by the individual or the spokesperson of the group appearing before the board. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to, authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Board members will not give remarks or provide comments from speakers. The board chair will refer to speakers to the superintendent and the district staff as necessary for further resolution. No profane and/or vulgar language or personal abuse against any person will be permitted. First up is Ms. Linda Gillis.
Hello, my name is Linda Gilbert. I live on 111 North Walker's Mill Road, Griffin, Georgia, and I've come to address you tonight because I am confused as you are. Why in the world take a boat? Everybody wanted it, I mean, the, over, a good majority wanted it, and now you're taking it away. Also, I also want to say that I feel that you do not need any more money, because I have been here on and off for over 58 years, and I've been waiting for you to get better. People, children, parents are taking their children out of this school system because it is a failure. They are not learning. That's, the, the proof is in the pudding, they don't want it. Private schools are just growing by leaps and bounds, homeschooling, and now they've also said that we, the parents can start taking their, their tax money with their children and take them out of your school system. All I'm asking is that you improve, and you're not doing it. We're at the bottom of the bottom, and it's not money because you've got a boatload of it. I don't know what you're spending it on, but obviously, it is not working. I hear things that are unbelievable, that is going on in our school system, and I don't want to believe it, but the children are telling their parents, and their parents are telling people like me that don't have any children in the school system. And if I just got my first great-grandson, and I can guarantee you, he will not be going to your schools. My grandchildren didn't go, my children did. I made the mistake of letting them stay. By the time my grandchildren came, I wash floors, I do estate sales, I do all kinds do all kinds of work. I'm 77 years old, and I mean, if I still have to wash a floor at 90, my great-grandson will not be in your school system. Now, that's a terrible thing to say, because there's a lot of teachers that are so good. I don't know what's happening, but something is not happening right. Thank you.
You're so welcome. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Next up, we have Mr. Art Ross.
Hi, good evening, board. Thank you for having me. My name is Art Ross. I reside at 443 Goldenrod Court in Griffin. First of all, I want to thank Sue McDonald for her comments, one that was not afraid to speak up and really tell it like it is. She pretty much took the question right out of my mouth. I'm just, I'm appalled. I've been in this county for four years. I come from, you know, from another county south of here, and taxes are a lot lower and the schools are a lot better. I don't understand it. Somebody needs to help me understand this, how we're at the bottom, but yet we're taxed the most. Seniors don't even get a break, and I'm sorry, I think we should, you know, with the school tax, and we don't even get a break, and we're not even getting any bang for the buck over here. So I just don't understand it, because, you know, we've had, what did we lose? Maybe 100 students from last year's enrollment? So if we lost that kind of enrollment, why do we need more money? Where's this money going? I mean, if we're trying to run this like a business of some sort, you know, if it gets that bad, that's when we need to make some cuts. And the kids shouldn't be the brunt of it. Maybe we need to take a look at our administration a little bit and find out, hey, are we a little top-heavy here? I mean, we're going to make some hard choices here, folks. This is ridiculous. I'm getting taxed to death. So isn't everybody else in this room? For the last four years, it's been what, about 48%? Our school taxes have gone up? You are driving people out of this county. That's what's happening. You've got adjacent counties like Pike County here. They're eating our lunch with the schools, less taxes. I mean, the direction we're going is definitely the wrong direction, and it's been that way for a while. We need to wake up and really take a hard look at what we're doing over here, because you're just driving people out of this county. Enrollment speaks for itself. I was in Coweta County not too long ago, and there's a private charter school over there. They've got big signs out front of their school, their charter school, says, "Welcome Spalding County students, welcome." What do they know? Yeah. So we need to take a hard look at this, folks. We need to really take a hard look. And again, Sue, thanks for bringing that up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Ross. Next up is Ms. Selena Burks.
My name is Selena Burks. I live at 140 North Walkers Mill Road. I concur with everything that gentleman just said, and also with Mr. Jones, where he, his one statement was overwhelmingly passed, this House Bill 581. And I concur too with you, Ms. Sue, about, you know, why have this opt-out option? We're being taxed to death for the last four years. I've been born and raised here, went to Griffin-Spalding County School System. I'm a product of this school system, and it's not what it used to be. So my plea to you is don't opt out. Lead the way and stay. Opt in. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Burks. Next up is Mr. Michael Middlebrooks.
Good evening. Michael Middlebrooks, 1108 Maple Drive. HP 581, you know, the public meeting, I'll get into the cuts and spending and whatnot, but House Bill 581, in my opinion, and I addressed the county board of commissioners last night with this, was a smoke-and-mirror bill. It was an election year. People supported it and said, "Look at what I did," and they sold it, and people believed it. It was supposed to be a grand scheme to save the taxpayers' money, when at the end of the day, just in layman's terms, and I'm by far not a super-educated man, but I'm smarter than the average bear, you cap the assessed values, but you give the option for the school board to the 20 mills, you give the county options on millage rate. So really, at the end of the day, all it does is suppress the value of the housing based on any growth pattern whatsoever, but it still gives the government the ability to tax. Now, does it cap the school board? Sure. But if you come out with a 20-mill rate on the current assessed values that we've endured for the last four years, if you go from the millage rate today to the 20 mills because of the financial difference and the financial impact, I'm not sure this room or school would be able to handle it because of the taxes we're already paying. And to the point of the senior discounts on school taxes, it's very limited in Spalding County. I've been an advocate for seniors being exempt from school taxes. Not sure that'll ever happen, but back to HP 581, if you opt in, I have just recently received something that a state senator has sent out. I believe there's going to be a, let's call it, there's going to be a revisitation of this bill, one way or the other. And I think if you opt out, I think it's going to, if you opt out at this point, I believe that they're going to do, at the state level, they're going to punish you for it. If you opt in, you're going to punish yourself if nothing happens at the state level. But, you know, the sponsors of the bill are supposed to be here to speak about it and maybe explain it better, but from my understanding, you're in a no-win situation regardless of how the people vote. Thank you.
Burks. Next up, we have Mr. Roy Barudin.
My name is Roy Barudin. My address is 234 Begonia Court. I'd like to share some numbers with you. These come from the official and complete election summary report for the state of Georgia. 4.9 million people voted on Amendment 1, HP 581, the local option home step property tax exemption back in November of '24. Of those 4.9 million, 3.1 million, or 62.92%, voted yes. Let me repeat that. 62.92%. Basically, 2/3 of the voters voted yes because we, the people, are sick and tired of our taxes increasing so much every year tied to the inflated value of our homes. Now, within Spalding County, there were 46,918 registered voters, of which 33,288 voted in the general election. That's 70.95%. That's pretty darn good, quite frankly, considering only 63.9% of registered voters voted in the national election. So that tells me that Spalding County trended about seven points above the national average, which says we really care about how we're governed, and we show our interest by voting. Alright? So of the 46,918 registered voters, 31,263 voted on the various amendments, of which 18,857 or 60.32% voted yes for Amendment 1. So within Spalding County, 60.32% voted yes for Amendment 1. I live in Sun City, Petrie. We're in Precinct 1, where 64.16% of Precinct 1 voted yes for Amendment 1, which is higher than the percentage attributed to Spalding County. We have a large voice and we want to be heard. Each of the five elected school board members sitting here today is elected the same way by the citizens that are registered voted in Spalding County. We're a representative democracy, and our representatives are chosen to represent the best interests of the people who elected them. Let me repeat that again. The best interests of the people. The people overwhelmingly voted yes on Amendment 1. Again, 60.32% of the registered voted voted yes. That is a mandate. You should not usurp the will of the people and opt out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry for mispronouncing your name as well. Gotcha. Alright, so we do not have executive session, and it is now time for adjournment. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to adjourn the meeting? It's been properly motioned by Ms. McDonald and seconded by Ms. Weldon. All in favor to adjourn, raise your right hand. Alright, this meeting is closed. Alright, now it's time for our general body meeting. At this time, can we call up Ms. Dallas James? I'm sorry, let me find my agenda. Yep, Ms. Dallas James and Ms. Harley Mitchell. Ms. Harley Mitchell and Ms. Dallas James, will you guys please, please report up to the front?
The meeting is now called to order.
The meeting is now called to order.
Thank you so much. Let's give our scholar... Come back, come back, Harley. Let's give our scholar from Jordan Hill, the Hill Will, a wonderful round of applause. This is fifth grader Ms. Harley Mitchell, and she is known as the mayor of Jordan Hill. And so she is the outgoing mayor, and so we have the new mayor, Ms. Dallas James, who will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and our prayer will be led by Leader Zachary Holmes of the 3rd District. Okay, baby, you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public who stands one nation under God, indivisible, almighty and just for all.
Awesome. Let's give our scholars a wonderful round of applause. Thank you so much, Mayor.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Alright, so now, you guys can hang out right here. You guys can still hang out because we have to do a spotlight, and we'll get ready to do our next... Our school spotlight is Jordan Hill. Prayer. I'm sorry. Mr. Holmes, go ahead and pray.
I can understand the excitement, Mr. Brown. Let us pray. Father God, we come right now in no other way that we know how, but with humbleness, gladness, and thanks in our hearts. We thank you, Lord God, for this day. We thank you for the excitement for our young scholars. We thank you for the opportunities that you make available. And Lord God, let the board members of this board make good decisions for those that we have been entrusted to lead, guide, and direct. And Father God, we just thank you in your son, Jesus' name. Let every heart say amen.
So our school spotlight goes to Jordan Hill Elementary School. Name of the school? Jordan Hill Elementary School. How many scholars attend your school? 403. What is your mascot? Jaguars. How many faculty have attended the school? 75. A quote from the principal on why you love being the proud principal of the school. "As the principal of Jordan Hill Elementary, I am continually inspired by the incredible growth and dedication of our scholars, staff, and community. Every day, I have the privilege of leading a team that is deeply committed to fostering a nurturing and challenging environment where every child can thrive. From our innovative curriculum to the strong relationships we build with families, our school is a place where both academic excellence and personal growth is prioritized. Watching our scholars reach new milestones, develop love for learning, and become thoughtful, compassionate individuals fills me with immense pride. I am truly honored to be a part of this vibrant community that works together to shape the future of our next generation." Say the Hill Will.
The Hill Will!
What good things are going on at the school socially, educationally? At Jordan Hill Elementary, we're creating an environment where both social and academic growth go hand in hand. Educationally, we've implemented an engaging, rigorous curriculum that encourages critical thinking, creativity, and a love for learning. Our teachers incorporate hands-on activities and incorporate technology to make lessons come alive and meet the diverse needs of our scholars. Our scholars are not only excelling academically, but also building meaningful friendships and developing strong communication and leadership skills. The strong sense of community among our scholars, staff, and families is truly what makes Jordan Hill Elementary a special place where every child is supported and celebrated for who they are. At Jordan Hill, we are deeply committed to promoting diversity and equity in every aspect of our school community. Educationally, we integrate diverse perspectives and cultural experiences into our curriculum, ensuring that students see themselves reflected in a way where they can learn. We celebrate different cultures and backgrounds for our staff. We offer opportunities to build their leadership skills that align with the future career goals for those aspiring to become academic coaches, principals, assistant principals, and coordinator positions. We actively encourage open dialogue with our families, hosting events and workshops to engage and empower all voices in the decision-making process. By fostering a culture of respect, empathy, and understanding, we strive to create a school where everyone feels valued and supported regardless of their background. Together, we are working to ensure that all scholars, families, and staff have accesses to resources, opportunities, and the support they need to succeed. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, and children of all ages, let's give it up for District 5 School, Jordan Hill Elementary, as our Board of Education Spotlight. If the principals and faculty members or parents, if you would join us over at the step and repeat, we would take a picture. Parents, you're able to come in as well. And it's in District 5, so Ms. McDonald will present the award to the board. Oh, Ms. Stula, didn't get a chance to give her the school info. Alright. Alright, so our next item on the agenda, you gonna hang out with us, Dallas? Or are you getting a picture with Sue? Alright, we're now moving on to Item Four, which is our Board: Norms and Protocols. Our words for this quarter are trust, integrity, and positive communication. Our norms and protocols are norms and responsibilities that talk about the governance team and how we are to deal with certain situations. And just a reminder, each board member has a copy of the Norman protocols and the words that we're focused on for Quarter One are trust, integrity, and positive communication. Next up will be our Griffin Spalding County School System Announcements. Leader Zachary Holmes.
Give Mr. Chair for the opportunity. With the announcement, we have one of our scholars here that's gonna do the honors. Mr. Fletcher, make your way up to the podium. I would like to tell you just a little bit about our scholar who's gonna do the... Name is Maurice Fletcher. As you can see Maurice, he plays baseball for Griffin High, but Maurice is in the twelfth grade at Griffin High. And some of his activities are, as you can see again, he's a baseball player. He's with Upward Bound. And his first choice going into college as a major is computer science. His first college of choice is Miles College. Other colleges that he's interested into is Clark Atlanta and also Benedict and Georgia State. I present to some and introduce to others our scholar who will take care of the privilege of doing our announcement, Mr. Maurice Fletcher. Let's give him a welcome.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Chairman Brown, members of the Board of Education, and Superintendent Simmons. My name is Maurice Fletcher. I am a senior at Griffin High School and I would like to thank the Board of Education for involving scholars of the district in the policy of legislative process. Griffin Spalding County Board of Education, Public Hearing Number Three, regarding House Bill 581 will be held February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five at four P.M. here in the boardroom at 216 South Street, Sixth Street, Griffin, Georgia. Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five will be the Board of Education Board of Education Board Word Session here at 216 South Sixth Street, Griffin, Georgia. The GSCS winter break will be February seventeenth through February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five at six P.M. will be the next Board of Education Board meeting here at 216 South Sixth Street, Griffin, Georgia. Governance team, cabinet members, and stakeholders, this concludes the Board of Education announcement for Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Fletcher, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Harley. For doing our announcements, we greatly appreciate you and we wish you a successful career in high school. Thank you so much. Alright, next up on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body, of this board as it relates to the adoption of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Holmes of the Third. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Register of the Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. So moved, the agenda is adopted. Next up is Public Comments Policy, B C B I. We have one person signed up for Public Comments. Here are the, just adhere to the Board Policy, B C B I guidelines, which were read in the earlier meeting. And we welcome you to come, Mr. Giles, to the podium for Public Comments.
Members of board, my name is Dallas Giles. I've heard everything y'all said early in the meeting. You wanna know what's going on? It's the bullying in the school. It's been brought to the board's attention. This is my little girl. If anybody don't know, the little girl that went missing in Spalding County, that was mine. She ran away, she's run away five times. I've mentioned it to some people. That's among the committee and nothing's been done. The other day, I got the worst call I could ever get. "Mr. Giles, you gotta come to the school after I've met with Dr. Simmons." And yes, I do honor that Dr. Simmons, he's by the one I will call Dr. Simmons because of the respect he showed me. But the thing about it is, when I get a call, "Mr. Giles, you gotta come down here," a ban was put on me because of my demeanor, how I carry myself, my demeanor of how I carry myself for the love of my children, the safety of my children. I get a ban put on me and it can't be lifted. I had to beg to go to my son's graduation. My only son. I don't know if the board ever got to meet the letter I wrote to Donald, he's no longer here, Will Doss. I don't know if y'all got the letter for me apologizing for my demeanor. Yes, do I carry myself loud? Yes, I do. I have a dad that's deaf in one ear, he always said to me, "But when this little girl tells me, 'Dad, if I run, if you send me to school again,' I'm running away? What am I supposed to do? The next thing's gonna happen." "Mr. Giles, come on, you're in trouble." I can give y'all this, but my problem is, there's a ban. My son goes to Spalding High, cell phones are being used, vapes are going on in that school. He's afraid of what might happen to him. He was assaulted at Rehoboth last year. My wife received a threatening letter from the administrator. I didn't bring that letter. Ever since I made a police report on what happened with me at Jackson Road, with the police report of what happened, my son slapping my daughter, I got a copy for the five board members here that, and I'll give it to somebody that y'all could pass that look. It even clearly states at the bottom, my daughter even tells them, "It happens more at home." I remember back in the day, I went to this school when it was Taylor Street Middle School, sixth grade building right upstairs, seventh, eighth. If a kid hit a kid, it was a brother or sister, we need D facts here now. Y'all not doing it. You want the, you want the school to succeed? And if I could get a few more minutes, this is the only reason I'm asking. Protect this. I've got a little... I did go to this gentleman, I did go wrong. I apologize to him today. There's bus drivers that are telling kids, "Shut up on the buses." The board needs to stand up, take back control, like when we were in the school. Y'all know this never happened when we all were growing up. The discipline was left in, to the hands, but a slap on the wrist for assault with my son. Turn around, me, being held against my will in Jackson Road, begging to please be let go. The last meeting y'all had? She wants to know if she can speak?
Go ahead.
Last year, the principal, the new principal, that's why she changed her last name, because she held my dad hostage in the room last year and then the old principal screaming at my face.
Well, we will definitely look into that and Dr. Simmons has a great relationship with your dad, so he'll be in contact with him to ensure that everything is okay moving forward. Thank you so much. Mr. Giles, thank you so much as well.
The only way y'all gonna fix this is take back control.
Yes, sir.
Just like they've said, you've got people that grew up here. I've been here forty-six. Yes, I went to Pike County for a little while because, but a house fell through. I had to bring them back to the one place that never protected me as a kid.
Yes, sir.
So who can I give these to so that they could be passed to the, to the five members?
Absolutely. You can come up. No problem. Thank you, Mr. Giles, for coming out tonight. Alright, we will go ahead and move to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent? I do have one thing on the consent agenda. Ms. Ray, if you look at Item Two, Business Action Items under D...
Excuse me, Chair, could we, could we get like a two-minute break, please?
Sure, okay. We will pause for a two-minute break.
So we're gonna redo it.
We're gonna do the old business. Yeah, so we're just gonna move Bailey to number two under Presentation and Discussion. Adam.
Can you get this scanned? It says, um, lining.
Most of them to project. Hopefully, they will. Hopefully, they will. I, I, I was, I was, uh... I've been involved with it.
Alright, and we are back. Ms. Ray, under Consent Agenda, for, I think it was the December meeting, it says Voting Members, and my name was left off. Can we make that correction because it shows that I voted five or six times within that meeting? Okay, thank you so much. Alright, so what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda? Second. Alright, it's been properly moved by McDonnell the Fifth and seconded by Leader Holmes of the Third. When your district is called, please vote yes or no. District One, yes. District Two?
Yes.
District Three? Yes. District Four? District Five? Consent Agenda is approved. Old Business. Under the agenda for Old Business, we have the election. Want to say that there was, the purpose of this is to amend and correct the election board officers at the prior meeting. There was a parliamentary procedure that was overlooked. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion to rescind the action taken at the last meeting, electing Board Chair and Vice Chair to correct a procedural error. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second coming from Ms. Register of the Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five, zero, that election is rescinded. Now, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Sue McDonnell as Vice Chair. Is there a second? It's been properly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Congratulations, Ms. McDonnell. This time, the floor is open for Chair Appointment.
I'm going to appoint Centel Brown as Board Chair.
It's been properly motioned, is there a second? It's seconded by Ms. Weldon of the Fourth. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. So moved. Alright, now it is official.
That's interesting.
Alright, moving on to our agenda. Under, actually, under the adoption of the agenda, we would like to, under Presentations and Discussion, to remove the first action item, Bailey Education Group Target School Support, and move it to Presentation and Discussions. Can I get a second for that? Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Alright, so the Item One under Item Seven now becomes Item Two under Item Six. Alright, and so now we're at the Presentation and Discussions. We have with us, yes? The motion, okay. Alright, so now we need to go back to rescind the adoption of the agenda motion. So I make a motion to rescind the adoption of agenda vote that was taken. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. McDonnell. All in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. That is a five oh for it to be rescinded. Alright, and so the new motion on the floor is to remove Item One under Action Item Seven and move to Item Six, Presentation and Discussions, under Item Two. I make that motion, is there a second? All in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Alright, now it is official. Item One is now under Item Two under Seven. So this time, we have, at this time, we have our two legislative delegation members that are here with us. We have Chairwoman Karen Mathiak representing House District Eighty-Two and Chairwoman Beth Kemp representing House District One Thirty-Five. At this time, Madam Chairs, if you would come to the podium and do your presentation on House Bill Five Eighty-One.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you so much, board members, for allowing us to be here today. We did not intentionally sit as possibly far away from this microphone as we possibly could. I do apologize for that. My name is Beth Kemp and I am new to representing Spalding County, but I'm honored to be here because my dad was born here, my parents lived, my grandparents lived here many years ago, and this is home for a lot of my family, so I'm very honored to be here. There was a lot of discussion earlier on House Bill Five Eighty-One. Part of my bill, I had a bill, and also the constitutional amendment was mine, H.R. Ten Twenty-Two. My bill was omnibus, put together with three other bills on signed eye, and it encompassed what is House Bill Five Eighty-One. What seems to be the most important factor is what it will do to the tax base. I used to sit on the Board of Education in Pike County, I get it, but... Um, but the assessments have really kind of been all over the place. Throughout our state, we've had a lot of challenges with various, um, taxation bodies and assessors not doing assessments in a timely manner. Um, I, I know many counties, for various reasons, have gone as many as ten years between assessments. That's a big jump. A lot happens in that timeframe. So, um, we had a number of people, um, we had come and speak over a two-day period last year, in twenty-three, year and a half ago, and they discussed with us the, the problems they're having. No one came and complained about millage rate, shockingly. They complained about the assessments. Um, because the assessments are kind of the elephant in the room. It's, um, it's kind of a wild card. You don't know exactly how the assessments are gonna come out. And oftentimes, there's some uniformity issues. The Department of Revenue, of course, has, um, some guidelines that need to be followed. But more importantly, when you can't set your digest, right? Until, you, you can't set anything, your millage rate, until you get your digest, which talks about how much your, your valuation is. So, to this, we, we kind of came up with this plan. We, um, it certainly was not to cheat, anyone has kind of heard someone imply. We want to make it more transparent for the property taxpayers in every community, especially Spalding. And so, the crux of it is, if your assessment in a homestead situation is frozen and you use an inflationary factor going forward, like consumer price index, which is what we're gonna do, then in that situation, it's uniform. So, if, um, if your house is worth two hundred thousand and mine's worth a hundred thousand, the percentage that the valuation goes up is more uniform. And, um, I've, I spoke earlier with an official in Spalding County. My understanding is about ninety percent of the county is residential. And of that ninety percent, about fifty percent actually homestead, meaning that they own their homes and they live in their homes. So, uh, if that is accurate, about forty-five percent of the taxpayers in Spalding County would be impacted upon us doing this. Um, and the millage rate is the clearest, in, in my opinion, is the clearest way to see if you're raising your, your, your tax rate. Raising millage rates are necessary, and sometimes it does happen because you need more money for various things. But if you are very consistent and say, all right, well, the assessments for this segment stayed pretty static, except for two percent or three percent, whatever consumer price index is, the rest of it will be evaluated. And if you look here at the bottom of this page, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit out of order. Property values may receive a three-year, uh, hang on a second. Parcels are required to be appraised at least once every three years. This is a change that is significant because that's not only residential. Commercial is also a factor that, um, sometimes goes longer in between. It's very challenging to, um, assess commercial properties. And so, oftentimes, counties kind of like skirt that. Um, that's not gonna be the case any longer. So, hopefully, we will have businesses and income-producing properties paying a little more tax to give some tax relief to the people who live in the community and live in their homes. So, that, all that being said, I spit a lot of information out. This was never meant to handicap. We, at the General Assembly, fully understand you are elected and duly elected to do the role of, um, establishing what your budget is and determining a millage rate based upon that. So, that's why we have the opt-out feature. I would encourage you, though, to, to look as diligently as you can to see if you can opt-in. It will provide some relief to people who live here and pay taxes. We have many people who were priced out of their homes realistically. Um, and I, I say this in all honesty. My husband and I bought our house twenty-three years ago, and we were paying about eleven hundred dollars a year in property taxes, and we are now paying forty-three hundred dollars in property taxes. I'm probably more of the norm than not. So, in that course of time, you know, I'm paying four times what we paid originally. For someone who is retired, I'm not, but for someone who is retired, or someone who, um, maybe is working part-time instead of full-time as they get a little older, it becomes very challenging for those individuals. So, that is another reason why we approach this. It talks here, um, about the, um, the one penny flossed. Because of the state constitution, we could not allow, unfortunately, school boards to take part in that. We would have to, once again, amend the constitution for that because, um, that's just not something that's, that we were able to encompass in this bill. But, um, I'm open for questions. My colleague Karen Mathiak may have something to say as well. I'm not a hundred percent sure. You good?
I always have something to say. You know that. You know I have something. Thank you, thank you. I think the biggest thing that I see with this bill is the freezing of the tax base. We do that now for sixty-five and over. This is gonna make it, um, make that, that freeze across the board, which I think will help with tax relief for people under sixty-five. And as Chair Lady said, I'm, we're looking at, um, tax relief for sixty-five and older. On the flip side of that, I don't want to become that town that we are taxing, like she said, taxing our families out. There's a gentleman in my district that, um, calls me every year and says, you're taxing me out, Karen. I'm gonna have to leave. I'm gonna have to leave. And he's, he's up at the north quadrant of the county, um, on a gentleman's farm, a small farm. So, you know that that, uh, property value has gone up and up. So, it's kind of a apples and oranges. You get a higher tax, I mean, a higher, uh, property value, but yes, your taxes go too. So, I think that we have to do something. The, uh, the state asked us to do something at the General Assembly. This is what we came up with. Our citizens voted on this. Now, it's up to all of us to do something to help our, our citizens in the tax base. So, that's, that's my six cents worth for tonight. And we're very, we, yes, we are open to questions. I want to apologize. Today was a little crazy with the snow last week. Appropriations is, we're trying to get it done so that, and that's where we've been all day. So, please, accept our apology for being so late. And Centel, now I know where the old library is.
Correct. Um, so I, I do want to say, um, just thank you to you ladies. I know that with last week, the snow was appropriations, you get a chance to. And to have two representatives there at chair and sit on appropriations is a, is a big thing. And so, just want to say thank you guys, you ladies, for your leadership and what you're doing under the Gold Dome. And I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Weldon of the fourth for inviting our state reps to come tonight. So, thank you so much, Ms. Weldon, for your leadership in getting those two ladies here. Thank you. Let's give Ms. Weldon a hand, y'all. So, at this time, we will take any board members who have questions. Uh, the Chair Ladies are here, and so we can ask them any questions so that they can, uh, provide some insight to us. And so, uh, looks like Leader Holmes, you got questions?
Yeah, I got, I, I got one, a scenario.
Okay.
Scenario. Uh, I, I was highly impressed, and I had to talk to him, uh, Mr. Middlebrook. He, uh, he lives in Miss Register's, uh, district. But we had a conversation, and, uh, and I thanked him for reading. And he was, and he stated in his comments that we as a school board are in a no-win situation.
True.
And, uh, I guess the question is kind of twofold. Do you all see that for school boards, not just this school board? And if you were sitting on a school board, how would you vote?
That is an excellent question. When I did sit on a school board, we did vote for a number of homestead exemptions, recognizing that the values of homes had increased exponentially. Um, and for that, we, we put a number of senior and disabled persons' homestead exemptions on at that point in time. But when I was on school board, we were just coming out of the Great Recession, and home values truly had not really rebounded from what they'd been before it all started in about two thousand and six. That said, we saw rapid growth in assessments and home values between probably twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. Home sales have gone down dramatically with inflation and interest rates being so high. So, people are not moving like they were. Um, that being said, again, I would look very diligently to see if this is, would be the right fit for my board and for the good people in Spalding County. If this is not the right fit, we do have the ability to do local legislation. And, um, simply, it would take a resolution from your board, and Karen and I would get to work, I'm sorry, Chairman Mathiak and I would get to work. And we would make sure that, um, that the legislation that you proposed would do what you wanted to do, would go through Legislative Council. It would go to a local calendar in the House and hopefully be passed. Again, it'd go to the Senate. And, um, and then, depending on what you're wanting to do, oftentimes, it does require a referendum of the good people of Spalding County. So, you're not only A and B. That would be where I'd like to go with that, Mr. Holmes. It's, it's not, you only can do A or B, opt-in or opt-out. There are other scenarios that come into play. Um, and it may take some creativity. This may be, uh, an exercise where everyone gets out of their comfort zone a little bit and says, what can we do? We can't do this, but we'd like to do something. What can we do? Um, and, and really, it's a catalyst. Because in five eighty-one, it said, if you have a better homestead, or if you have a better relief system for taxation in your county, the better one prevails. Five eighty-one was a blanket. Um, it's something that has been successful in several counties in our state. Is it gonna be successful in every county? Probably not. But it is a wonderful conversation piece to say, all right, our assessments have gone up exponentially. Are we, are we rolling back our millage rate to the point we should? Um, you know, I know everything's gotten more expensive. I do know that. We have a bill that's gonna be coming before us. It's already been dropped. That would reduce, um, the millage rate from fourteen mils to ten mils, and a school system still be able to keep their equalization grant. We are fully funding QBE. We are taking steps not to handicap ever our schools because we spend fifty-two percent of our state budget on education. We love our kids. Our workforce development and the future of Georgia are the kids that come to your school. We recognize that. But it's not an A or B. Some, it could be a C or a D. It's just gonna take a little deep dive to see what would be the most appropriate thing for this district.
Thank you so much for that, 'cause I, uh, we, I, I may be the only one, had been hearing either option A or option B. And, and just you saying that we have other options is, is valuable for me. So, thank you for that.
Of course, and we, of course, our legislative session is going to end April fourth. For us to have any local legislation, we would have to have it drafted and submitted to the Clerk's Office, probably no later than mid-March.
When, when would, uh, when is crossover day? Because that's what would have to be submitted.
Crossover day does not play into local legislation.
Oh, it's not?
It's the only thing that does not play into crossover day.
That's good to know.
It is. And it's a magical place called local legislation, and that's the committee that I chair.
Well, we got all kind of connections.
The other thing, too, Mr. Holmes, I want to, I want to say, too, A, B, C, D. What, what do you pick and choose? Fayette County does have a cap on theirs. They've kept it at three percent. So, that, that's something that we can look at, too, for our community.
Assessments, yes. Assessment caps, yes.
Assessment caps. So, that, that may be something that we need to address or investigate.
Thank you so much.
I, I do have one question. I did read, um, that there was some legislation out there proposed that, um, would, uh...
Hold on, um, Ms. Register, we, we gotta follow protocol and rules. What I want to do, turn your light back on, and I'll go ahead and recognize you. All right, go ahead.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Newbie. Proposed that would, um, give us more time to, to vote on this. Is that correct?
That is correct, and my understanding is that bill is gonna be getting a hearing very soon. Um, it was a time of the essence. We didn't want to belate the situation where it was a year because, let's face it, we're all procrastinators, we're human beings. Um, we recognize now that perhaps March was a little soon. So, yes, my understanding is there is gonna be a longer period of time. Um, there's a number of cleanup issues that have been proposed but have not been, um, dropped as bills yet. So, right now, they're kind of hearsay. But, um, but yes, extending the period is something that definitely is being discussed.
Yeah, I think that with you telling us that it's not just an A and B option that, that has everybody's wheels turning.
Good, I love wheels. I love wheels turning. That's a positive thing.
I think that there were so many, so much misinformation out there that, um, Ms. Weldon, I'm thankful that you did invite us and give us the opportunity to talk about this bill. If it's not a good fit, we'll find a fit.
Are there any other board members? Uh, we're gonna go ahead and go to Ms. Weldon of the fourth, and then we'll go to Ms. McDonnell the fifth.
Thank y'all for coming, but I still feel like I'm in the place where it's a no-win situation. So, I feel better now that you've said that there are other options that we can look at, which I'm sure all of us are gonna be interested in. And I appreciate y'all coming, because I know I'm busy out there. Thank you.
You're so welcome. Yeah, you're busy. We're, we're very thankful to be here. I, I would like to also point out, sometimes, there's nothing wrong with being a coffee cat when you look around and you see what other neighboring counties, or maybe a county somewhere distantly that has a similar population and, and density, um, to kind of come up with, well, what are they doing successfully? Um, this, this legislation was the brainchild. Actually, um, I dropped a bill, and Representative Ron Stevens of Savannah, he wrote, he dropped the bill the day after I did, and it was an almost identical bill. And he said, we've been doing this in Chatham County for a number of years successfully. Um, and, uh, you know, it was kind of remarkable because they're doing it also in Fulton County successfully, and this has been going on for years and years. Now, the dynamics of, uh, commercial are gonna be a little different. Um, and, you know, there are other opportunities in those communities with hospitality that maybe don't exist here. But I promise you, there are some steps that we could take to relieve the homeowners' angst with property taxes that would not negatively impact any of our students.
Thank you. McDonnell?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, ladies, for being here tonight. I'm speaking not only for myself as a Sun City resident, but I've, several of my neighbors were here, uh, tonight to speak. And the one thing I said is, is that maybe perhaps the governor needs to rescind this and just start all over. Because I don't like, as a board member, to be put in a no-win situation that Ms. Weldon has alluded to, and I did earlier before you all got here. I vote yes, it's a no-win. If I vote no, it's a no-win. I don't know why the state legislature would put us in that position. I don't know why our neighbors and our, and our people in the state of Georgia voted on this in November, and then all of a sudden, there are caveats, and you gotta do this, and you gotta do that. Historically, I think we all know that the assessments in Spalding County have not been up to par. I do know, by talking to, uh, county, uh, people and city people, that the state, Spalding County was told year after year that your assessments are way too low, and now, all of a sudden, they're way too high. And I attribute that to, you know, from what I've been able to find out, having moved to Griffin eight years ago, is that there was no leadership here, whether it was, you know, local, whether it was school, whether it was this, that's immaterial. It's pretty obvious that there was no leadership to help direct the people that make the decisions in the county. But I don't like being in this position because of vote that I take, I want to vote, and I want to win. I want to win for kids. I want to win for parents. I want to win for bus drivers. I want to win for our employees. Students, parents, kids, and employees. You hear me say that all the time. I'm really irritated. I don't know how to become unirritated with this because I want to take care of the people that put me in this seat, and I also want to take care of the students that we, that we teach every day, and our employees. And I don't know how, right now, I don't know how to do that. I don't know how much time we have to do more local legislation. I mean, what's the timetable on that? Do, will we, will we hear from the state in two weeks? Will, will, do we have to do this by March the first?
You, um, as of right now, it isn't opt-in or opt-out by March first. And I'm gonna... And I'm going to tell you, you said that you don't like being in this position. I get that 100%. But I'm going to tell you, the counterparts on the other side of the aisle in the Senate, I guess across the hall, on the other side of the aisle, across the hall, they wanted it to be an opt-in only with no opportunity for any local board to have a decision. We, as the House, said that was unacceptable because we do understand you do need local control. So I understand that you feel like you've been put in a position that's unwinnable. But the honest truth is, if the Senate had had their way, you wouldn't have had a choice whatsoever.
Well, I appreciate you letting me know that, but that still doesn't make me feel any better than I do right now. I mean, I appreciate you sharing that and I'm glad that the House required them to think differently and propose differently. I mean, what's the timetable on local legislation that would protect our, our constituents?
Well, again, you would need to have it submitted, probably during a resolution as a board, have it submitted to either Representative Mathiak or I by the middle of March so we could get it through by the end of session, which is April 4th. If you're unable to come up with it during that timeframe, if you feel too crunched, you need more time to gather data, we will be back in session in January of '26. And at that point in time, you can, again, give us a resolution and we'll do it. We're a part-time legislature, so unfortunately, we have that very definitive period of time that we're in session. You can work though. Upson County, a couple of years ago for them, they gave me resolutions in the fall for the local legislation they wanted to have accomplished and I submitted it early in January. So that, the timeframe when you do it is not necessarily as important as when we were able to do it because of the timeframe involved. But if you wanted to do a study committee, if you wanted to sit down with a tax assessor, there's a number of things you could do to gather information and then go from there. You're not in a situation without options.
So you're, I think what I hear you saying is that you're telling Sue McDonald that she won't have to vote yes or no, opt-in or opt-out if we do the resolution.
You do have to, you do have to go one way or the other, but the caveat would be, we're working on local legislation.
Right.
That would be, we, we're going, we're going, we're looking at this, this did not work, we're going to do something else that will work.
That doesn't make any sense to me. I'm going to vote something that...
Well...
You're voting no. You're opting out. You're saying this won't work for Spalding County.
Okay.
And if you, and if we opt-out, then we have the ability to, for this board, to work with our board attorney, superintendent, and whoever else to develop a resolution as to what we want to do. From there, we can then, once we get that vote, we can then come together, I can appoint a study committee of two board members that can meet along with the superintendent and Mr. Jones, whoever, and we can get that resolution to Chairman Mathiak or Chairman Camp so that they can work on the local legislation. It just needs to be done by March 1st if, if that's the route that we're going to go. So after we have taken a vote, we will then have a plan in place to how we're going to move forward to if we do the, the option of the local legislation and doing a resolution on the board to send to our members of the Gold Dome.
Well, I, I just feel like, and I had this conversation last night with one of my neighbors, it just, I just feel like, and I'm not accusing anyone, it's just the state of politics in today's world. That you draft these really hard things that are really hard for even me to understand in a voting booth. But it's like Mr. Middlebrook said, it's the smoke mirror bill.
I disagree with that. You're having a conversation right now that you never would have had unless this bill existed.
I understand that, but I, I just feel like that sometimes my job is to be transparent and tell the entire story. Sometimes I don't think people in higher-ups do that. I'm not being accusing either, I'm just, I've seen it in my life throughout the years. I, I, I just don't know that I can vote to continue to raise taxes in Spalding County.
And that's exactly what we were trying to do, was lower the taxes to be able to...
I understand that.
...keep our citizens here so that we...
But then you also tell me as a board member that if I vote this way or vote this way, then it's, it's a done deal. I'm not really sure I want my name on something that's a done deal that can't be revisited.
Be revisited. You could come back, this is a referendum the good people of the state of Georgia voted in favor of.
Right.
You could opt back in anytime. You just can't opt out repeatedly. You can opt back in. If one year from now you said, you know what, let's try that, you can opt in. Just right now, you have to make a decision right now what you're going to do. In the future, you can opt back in. It is a referendum that's been passed by the citizens of the state of Georgia. As a taxation board, you have the ability to opt back in.
Did other board members know that?
You can always, you can always opt back in.
See, and there's the misinformation that disseminated that...
You can opt back in because it's a, it's a referendum that has been passed by the state of Georgia.
Right.
So you have that ability to do that as a taxation board.
Well, and I'm sure being a former school board member, you can understand the position that all of us are in. And I just, I got to take care of my people. And I'm, I'm sitting in this chair to take care of all my people.
Now, you, you mentioned, Ms. McDonald, that you live in Sun City Peachtree. So most of the residents, well, anyone who's over 65, has the ability in Sun City to freeze their property assessments.
Right.
And there's no Consumer Price Index. So because that is the better exemption, there would be no impact to anyone who's already utilizing that exemption. So I don't know how many people in your district live only in Sun City and are over 65, but honestly, your district's probably in a great position right now with the fact that your digest is more static. So if you need to raise the millage rate, it's more evident and transparent to all people that you're increasing the property taxes.
Right.
That was the whole purpose of the bill.
Right. Yeah, I'm one of those people. I'm just turned 29, so.
My dad just had the 31st anniversary of his 50th birthday.
Yeah. But thank you for hearing me out and I'm, I'm just, I've struggled with this from the very beginning and, but I'm going to do all I can to take care of the people that put me in this chair. And I appreciate you all being here tonight.
Well, we have the same obligation and I appreciate you too, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
No problem. I am so glad that we were able to have this conversation tonight. This is what our democracy is all about, coming to the table, being able to talk these things out. But yes, we do have to make a decision, but it is good that we were able to get our two representatives here in the district to speak to us. And so thank you so much, ladies, for coming and we look forward to working with you throughout the session.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
No problem.
Next week.
All right. Next up, under Presentation and Discussions, we have Bailey Education Group Target School Support.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may, I would like to formally introduce Chief Academic Officer of Bailey Education Group, Ms. Tanisha Washington. I know that that's the Director of the Special Education Program, but with all the HB 581, I've forgotten her name, so I apologize. But they, they will pick up the presentation from here and then provide a little bit more insight into their organization and how they believe they can assist us in supporting some targeted efforts in three of our elementary schools.
All right. Ladies?
Absolutely. Good evening. Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent Simmons, really excited to be here to share with you a little bit about what we do as an organization. I am Tanisha Washington. This may be news to Dr. Simmons. As of January 1, CEO of Bailey Education Group. So I think he said Chief Academic, so I'll, I'll share that news with him. Glad to, glad to be here. So whatever is protocol, I can go through the complete presentation or I can share highlights, history, and answer questions. So whatever is protocol for the board.
Let's do highlights, history, and then answer questions.
Perfect, perfect. And I do have our Director of Special Education, Barbara Cage, here with me. So we traveled in both to share with you. So Bailey Education Group as an organization was founded in 2007, founded by Mr. Gary Bailey, who is our namesake. Gary is our managing partner and he is an architect. He has designed schools across the state of Mississippi for over 40 years. Bailey Education Group was founded in the premise of service. So Mr. Bailey came together with a group of other partners and thought, I am impacting students' lives with these wonderful buildings and these wonderful classrooms. I need to impact what is going on inside of these beautiful buildings. So Bailey Education Group just kind of came out from his architecture business and now 17 years later, we are impacting the lives of students across the country. We are actively engaged in partnership in 10 states across the country and growing. Looking very forward to building that footprint, again, as we very strategically grow our impact across the country. Sorry. I didn't realize that was touchscreen, so, so I started to touch. Our mission as an organization is to improve the lives of all children. That is a mission that is near and dear to all of us. And the question most asked is, how do you do that? How do you impact the lives of children? And we do that through building the capacity of teachers. The teacher is the number one determinant of how a, how successful a student is. We build teacher capacity. 85 to 90% of what we do as an organization drills down to the teacher level. That is providing side-by-side, direct instructional coaching to teachers. It is job embedded. This is not pull-out professional development. We are not removing them from their classroom spaces. We are side-by-side, knee-to-knee in the classrooms, right there with them, providing one-to-one coaching cycles. Those coaching cycles are targeted, they are customized, they are unique to each individual need of the teachers that we support. And again, we support those teachers through our instructional coaching cycles. Those cycles are through our instructional coaching model. It is rooted in research. It is not very different from any other instructional model that you will find if you research instructional coaching because it means a lot to me to be rooted in research. So that is our instructional coaching model. And very quick, very high level, but that is high level what we do as an organization, all around, building teacher capacity. We utilize data. We analyze data. We're able to then disaggregate need. Once we have disaggregated individual need, we can establish a scope of work, put together a team, employ that team into schools, and they are then able to produce some very, very meaningful outcomes that we're really proud of. So I, again, I would love to answer any specific questions from the board. I can, again, go a little bit deeper if, if necessary into the presentation.
Have you heard the presentation? You got any questions? All right, we'll start with Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, ladies, for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us.
I know in the information that the superintendent's office gave us in our packets, it just mentions three schools, Moore, Anne, Street, and Oars. Is that the only three that you'll be, you'll be in?
Correct, correct.
Can you tell me why?
Absolutely. So we start with the data. When I initially started having conversations with Dr. Simmons and his team, we looked at data first. So my team has a data department, that data department utilizing public-facing data, kind of disaggregated down to targeted schools. We used schools that have designations. You have designated schools in your district that are comprehensive support, targeted support, so CSI schools, TSI schools. Those schools oftentimes need unique types of support. So we utilized those types of data to make that decision and just having open conversations about areas of very targeted need, just wanting to really, really target in on the most unique needs. So working directly with Dr. Simmons and his team.
Okay. Another question I had was, have we had any teacher input or administrative input from these schools with regard to the use of your services for our system?
I cannot speak in-house. I can say, my organization has not made any contact with principals or teachers.
Okay. So has anyone within the system, the organization, talked to our leaders in our buildings and our teachers?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you for the question, Ms. McDonald. So as you know, we, we have a cadence for continuous improvement plan updates and learning walks and the such. And in those conversations, we are constantly trying to find ways to provide additional support, not just for the schools that we've identified here for this project with Bailey, but all of the schools who are not yet performing at their desired goals or their desired objectives. So the answer to the question is yes, we've had those conversations with leaders. We did not specifically state that we would work with a particular group such as Bailey or anyone else. As you know, there's similarity between the schools that we've identified and the work that we're doing with the University of Virginia in support of some of the schools. Same conversations, a little bit more targeted support.
Well, and, well, thank you, Dr. Simmons, for that response. And another thing that, you know, I'm sitting here thinking about is, you know, we, we have more schools now on the needs improvement list, so I'm curious as to why, and I understand your, your data, I, I understand that, respect that totally. I don't know why needs improvement schools perhaps are not being targeted.
So what we did is we looked at both the beginning of year and middle-of-year performance data coming out of the schools. Some of the schools are trending in the right direction, at the right pace, giving us lots of confidence that they will meet the targets that we've established in collaboration with them. Some of the schools demonstrated some regression and those were the schools that we felt needed some additional supports. We, we often hear and talk about the central office and it being top-heavy. And I'll just remind you that we only have so many folks. I've shared with you in a previous meeting that in some of our classrooms, particularly in these schools, there may be instructional needs because of FMLA, there may be instructional needs because the teacher is brand-new, and, and the one coach in the school that we're able to provide can't be in every classroom doing the same work at the same time. This was an opportunity to continue to support schools, but also give those specific classrooms, those specific tested subjects in grade levels, in grade areas, the opportunities to accelerate their, their learning, particularly with the GMAAS assessments around the corner.
Do you have any other systems that you could show, or perhaps you already have data?
Absolutely.
Because I'm, I'm just sitting here looking at 15 days. I mean, what I went through as an educator myself, in 15 days, at times, I was just glad the kid could come into my classroom and just sit and...
Right. So, so I'll talk a little bit about days that we propose. So we consider the instructional weeks remaining until the summative assessment. So generally speaking, we would measure from, from February, say, to your summative state assessment. And we are close, very, very close to that window being done. There's not a lot of opportunity. So if I consider 15 instructional weeks remaining between now and summative, that allows 15 coaching cycles, weekly, consistent coaching cycles. So those are how we propose those types of numbers. That number 15 is not to suggest that that is the necessary number or that is the number that's needed. However, that is the number for the, the time period that we have remaining before the summative assessment. These are types of partnerships that we hope to go into that then extend to the summer and then that extend to the next year. So this is not a disconnected service, yet it is a continuum of service where teachers are receiving this throughout the school year through the next. So when you see 15 days, that is because of an instructional week remaining prior to summative assessments.
But that's not what the contract states. It says 120 days total. And that 15 times 8 is 120.
So, so you need to look at each content area. So if, I, I'm not sure exactly what you are looking at, but you should see English Language Arts, you should see math. And then when you, so you would say 15 days of English Language Arts, 15 days of math equals 30 days, and then 30 days times the designated school. So you should see, again, I'm not, I don't see what you're looking at, but you should see days per content area. So our English Language Arts Department would work with English, English Language Arts teachers. Our Mathematics Department would work with Mathematics teachers.
Okay. So back to my question of other districts you've worked in and some research that you could show us with regard to...
Absolutely. So I sent several pieces of just unique data. I thought it was important to pull data with similar demographics to yours.
Sure.
So a few highlights are in, these are partner states. If you look at those partner states in... If you look at those partner states, in each of those, I can name districts of success. So we have data readily available in all partner states. We utilize data, we generally disaggregate data using the end-of-year summative. So you would see our success over the summative.
Sure.
So if you go back to where the partners in the state, so we're in Georgia. Let's just, give us a district in Georgia that is similar to our size that you have worked with.
I'm trying to get there.
I think it was right there. Go back to the other one, is that it? Georgia...
No, it's not, it's later on.
Okay. Because I think that was Ms. McDonnell's main question.
Okay, so these are districts that have been pulled.
Are these, so Montgomery, this is Georgia, or these are other states?
So these, yeah, these are collection of other states.
Alright, so we're specifically interested, I know I am specifically interested in schools in Georgia that are...
Okay, so sorry, that was my misunderstanding. We do not have statewide summative trending data for schools in the state of Georgia, because we just started our work in the state of Georgia. So of our ten partner states, Georgia will not be referenced because of how we disaggregate data. So at the end of this school year, we'll be able to analyze Dougherty County as an example of a Georgia school district, analyze where we started, baseline to end-of-year performance, and I will be able to share that data with you. In that particular school district, we are focused on elementary teacher coaching in English Language Arts.
Okay. And I guess you would say that there are schools in Dougherty County down in Albany that would mirror maybe a Anne Street, Oars, or Atkinson?
Right.
And so, interested in looking at that. What, so let's look at, so you don't have any states, any schools in Georgia? And I'll get to you, Ms. Register. The schools in Montgomery, are they same size as ours?
Right, so everything that you see here is of a similar demographic. So that's why they were pulled. So if you look at Danley Elementary School and the Montgomery Public Schools, that is Montgomery, Alabama, you can see their specific data there. You can see Montgomery again as a school district moved from a D to a C. Danley, you can see their success with the fifty-one percent...
How does Danley Elementary mirror Griffins Spalding in any way? And the Montgomery School District that moved from D to C, how does that mirror Griffins Spalding?
So Danley, I don't know the details, but I know my data guy does. The, he pulled demographics of Griffins Spalding, aligned those with demographics of our partners, and these were the ones that he pulled.
But we're not sure what demographics he used to do it.
Right, but we would assume general demographics, size, racial, socioeconomic. So we would assume all of the typical demographics that we would study to align data.
I think it would be beneficial for us to put that information in there, which we can request for the February work session, Dr. Simmons, to include that information. Because I think, I mean, we have two new board members that are joining our board. And so I would love for them to be able to see and be able to compare in these questions in order to approve this. One second. And then the other question that I have... And this, well, maybe you can answer, maybe Dr. Simmons can. But if you go to the, Lonnie, can you pull up the memo that Dr. Warren sent us? For this particular item? Was it Dr. Warren? I think it was something that came from Dr. Warren. Did it come for teaching and learning? Oh, so it came from Dr. Simmons, the memo that Dr. Simmons did. Because I see some data points on there, and so I'm just curious, Dr. Simmons, we've provided support through UVA, and I guess there are two schools that are, UVA schools that are part of this list as well?
Yes.
And so I guess in looking at the work, and we went through this, when we talked about UVA, the return of investment and all that, I guess I just need to see how, you know, I know we all have school improvement plans, and there are different things that are moving parts to which help to raise the test scores. And so I just need to be able to see, I get more information on, you know, being able to support this particular group to provide target support for those schools.
Understood, if I may. Let me have you show me the supporting documents in action item seven point one. Right there.
Right there. Go back down, Lonnie.
That's not Lonnie, Lonnie's a little... Yes. There you go.
Yeah, that's it, right there.
Scroll to the middle of that doc, the middle of the page, keep going? Middle page two, okay. So stay right there for me, if you would. So a couple of things. Let me, board members, reiterate, when you hear UVA schools, and that is, the onus of that is on me. What often gets lost in the UVA schools is that there's a perception that that work is centered in the schools. And if you remember, that work is centered in the district. That was an opportunity for us to try and get the district office to understand how to support and accelerate school improvement. So if you were to go back and look at the schools that were on the state's designated lists, the schools that demonstrated progress would have been those schools, because we as a district have a better understanding of that work. Yet, those schools may not be moving fast enough to get them off of a list before another list becomes, you know, in existence. The other thing in that regard is that some of those schools still are experiencing, you know, ad hoc turnover, whether it be for random reasons or what have you. I've also shared with you in some of those schools that the grade level size is the size of one classroom, limiting the opportunity for a student or the teacher not to be on his or her best day. Some of those schools are still also trying to ensure that they have high-quality instruction in those classrooms. Yet, all of those schools have coaches, and so we're trying to do more than what's currently in place. So yes, two of those schools are considered to be quote-unquote "UVA schools", although UVA is really what the district does. Those schools would be Moore and Oars. As you know, Anne Street is a Tier Four school. There are only a handful of those in the state of Georgia. I don't want one in Griffins Spalding. So it would not behoove the district to do for Anne Street what we're doing for every school and expect that school to do as well as others. So that's another reason why Anne Street was there. But with regards to the data, Mr. Chairman, I think that you were talking about, when you look at the, when you look at the shaded red areas, you'll see if there's a school there that has a shaded red and math, that means that there was a regression in performance. If that happened, that school became a part of this discussion. That is why there may be other schools in the district that may appear to need support, but they are trending forward, and we will want to try and get these schools situated to accelerate their growth, particularly as we get ready to take these GMASS assessments. So that's why you may hear about, well, what about this school or that school? It may appear on the outside that this school or that school needs a lot of help, and we believe we can provide that level of help. But when we go and we look at a school who is putting their best foot forward, and yet they are going backward, what we need to do is face reality and see if we can get some help and see if we can do things differently. So that's how this conversation came.
And that's good, because when you brought up the point, I just want to know, like, what factors caused the school's performance to decline in the projected proficiency in the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, as indicated as you have on here with the red highlights on the chart?
And in some cases, it could be attendance. In some cases, it could be, you know, a teacher who decided that the profession wasn't for her, or him, or a family situation that caused the transfer. It could be a litany of things. And so part of the reason that Bailey Education Group was attractive is because they offer a model that enables them to support the students directly in a classroom where that is needed. I did not find any other external consultation who could support teacher, I mean, who could support both teachers and coaching and students in the absence of the teacher. The other side of that, I think that I didn't do a good job answering. When we were asked why only so few, or why only this many, because of the, this is not a budgeted item. This was not something that we were aware of at the start of the budget. So I'm trying to be mindful of that. But I also recognize that we have some funds in the coffers. I also recognize that I've shared with you, it is my intent to spend those down, and this is an effort to demonstrate I'm spending that down in the schools who need it the most.
Okay. Alright. And I think this, you know, in your presentation for the work session, looking at those factors which caused a decline in the projected numbers, so I think that would be good to include into the presentation so that we just have a bigger picture of it. That's all I have. We're going to go to Ms. Register of the second for questions.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for that presentation. I, in full transparency, I did, I feel like asked about fifteen questions to Dr. Simmons prior to this meeting, just because I did have some questions after reading this proposal. In light of what you've shown us, I had a couple of more. So we have fifteen days. The data that you showed us, how many days did those schools get?
That, right there, so...
They got the fifteen days as well?
Right, so you'll see Anne Street, fifteen days ELA, fifteen days math, or fifteen ELA, fifteen math, and Moore, fifteen ELA, fifteen math.
But the data for the schools that you showed us previously, that the success...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
How many days? Are we comparing apples to apples here, or is it fifteen days?
No, they would in your window, because we often, I am always going to propose weekly coaching cycles, which is the weekly, one coaching cycle per week. So data that I can share will hold up to a coaching cycle per week. Now, it may not be fifteen, because if you're looking at a project that started in September, then it may be forty, because they have had forty instructional weeks. But they have had a person in the building one time per week in a consistent coaching cycle. So the weekly is aligned. The number of days will not. That will vary depending on when we are able to begin the support.
Do y'all understand what I'm asking? I'm just wondering if these other schools had six months to do this.
Seventy-five days, right.
That might be the indicator to what's getting them there. My other question is, the schools that did go from, you know, a D to a C, or a C to a B, did they sustain this after, you know, how many years were they able to sustain that or improve? Do you have data to show that?
We do. So one of the things that I presented was what we call a case study, which is Hattiesburg Public School District, chosen because of similar demographics, and it shows you their progression over time. So it shows you how they went from F to now A, and then they have sustained the A over three years. So yes, they are the case study. My presentation isn't there anymore. But they are the, they are one of... Okay, so that talks about, if you go back one, you notice he says the sustainability and of extensive partnerships. So he talks about over time. So you can see this particular one who was chosen as his case study. And when I say he, I mean my Director of Data Analytics. You can see he goes from the 2020, the 2021 school year all the way over to 2324. And you see the sustained, consistent growth of this particular school year. So yes, we are seeing sustainability. We are seeing the recurring of the partnership that I described earlier. We don't want to come in and provide support, because remember, we are support, we are not a product. There is no product, there is no program. It is, we are a service provider. So once we begin to provide a service and we begin to build capacity, we don't recommend that that service then just be taken away. We are building teacher efficacy, we are building their overall effectiveness, we're building their capacity. So we want to continue that. So we have several examples of multi-year partnerships, and this is an example of one that is very successful.
Okay, and then I got my final question for right now. So this is just a one-time contract that we are proposing?
For this particular school year.
What would an ongoing contract look like?
Based on your processes as a school district, we have some partners who go into multi-year contracts. So we sign with their legal, we sign a contract that is multi-year. The majority of our contracts are year-to-year. We have a purchase order, many purchase orders go through June 30. We begin conversation, by July 1, we are renewing a new purchase order, a new contract. But we do not have one process that we follow. We accommodate our partners. And again, across ten partner states, it is done differently in many. This, again, that is the case study that he chose to use. They are in a multi-year partnership.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Thank you so much, alright. Ms. Weldon, you're recognized.
Hard time buying into this. It looks like there are not enough days, and it's a lot of money. And when I look on the front here and it says, "Implement High-Quality Learning for Systematic Coaching and Support", we have coaching already in the schools. And I also look, it says, "Regularly Conducting System Checks to Ensure Teachers Are Engaging", we already do that. And then I look at "Student Mastery on Grade Level Expectations", we already have our expectations. And then when I look at "Developing Effective Instructional Routines", we already have that in our school system. And then I look at "Formative Assessment", we have that. "Rigor Teaching to Grade Level Expectation", we have that. So why are we spending all this money when we already have this in the schools? And it's not working for us. Also, you're just a support system. We need help on the front line for the students. The teachers graduated with a degree to teach schools, they're able to teach. The students need the help. We need lower class sizes, we need more help in the classroom for that classroom teacher. We don't need another program for the teacher to have to try to implement or get service on. So I'm having a hard time supporting this.
Understood. And that's why we removed it, Ms. Weldon, from a vote to a presentation? And so now what I'm going to ask, board members up here have asked questions. Hold on, Mr. Holmes. We all have asked questions, and so in the work session presentation, hopefully we can kind of recap the questions that we asked and put those answers in a presentation so that we can see what we're going to do moving forward. So we'll put it back on the agenda for a work session in February, where we're not making a vote, but we will continue to hear what the superintendent has recommended, and we will go from there. And so this is just a recommendation, it's a presentation. We'll have another presentation at the work session. And I think by either if we can't settle it there, we can talk about it on the retreat agenda. But let's just, still a presentation, keep a robust conversation going on amongst us board members, this governance team, and we'll be able to figure out what is best for our district.
Thank you ladies for coming and doing the presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Ms. McDonnell, we're going to go down to Leader Holmes, and then you can close it out, and then Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, ladies.
Hi.
I have a question that, that came, this subject came up from a meeting with Dr. Taylor and Dr. Greer about, you know, ELA and kids and our three to five grade level, which people don't, I'm not going to say they don't, but they probably don't think of it when they're looking at solutions. But I want to ask if you do anything, a focus, or make recommendation, or whatever, about attendance problems? Because, and I tell you why I asked that question. In our conversation with Dr. Taylor and Dr. Greer, the schools identified, and the kids that were having problems had attendance problems. And that directly affected their learning. And I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But do you all do anything, or do you address that in, 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 uh, going through this process?
Okay, so chronic absenteeism is absolutely a, a, an issue everywhere, not just here, but everywhere. But that is not a, a menu option that we have. However, when you look at data and teacher capacity is built, and those instructional practices are improved, then you generally start to see attendance, uh, improve as well. So we hope those two things go hand in hand. So are we directly focused on chronic absenteeism? No. Are we impacting that in a positive way? Absolutely. Because I know and I believe, and the data say, I mean, we have pages of successful data, um, that say we are, we are improving student outcomes every single day. And when those outcomes are improved, students, students are more engaged, and we start to see an uptick in absenteeism. But no, directly, no, not at all. But I do have some, I have some colleagues that do work specifically for, um, chronic absenteeism, if that's the need.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Just one more question, Mr. Brown. Thank you, and I thank you again, ladies, for being here tonight. So the fifteen days of service, is that a, is that a normal prescription? Or is that an abnormal number of days? Is that pretty much? I mean, do you have a plan for thirty days, forty-five days?
It is. It, it, as I said earlier, it is, it is based on the timing of the year. Um, if I were standing before you in September, it would not be proposed fifteen days, because this is based on instructional weeks remaining. Um, so it is aligned in that I am always going to propose a weekly coaching cycle. So if it is thirty weeks of instruction left, you would see thirty days. Um, but Dr. Simmons also alluded to budget. That also is, is something to be considered.
Sure.
So if ninety days goes to one hundred and eighty days, and someone is there two days per week, then that doubles that. Uh, but again, coaching cycles, I always am going to recommend one per week.
Okay.
So I, I do recognize fifteen doesn't look like enough. I understand having buy-in. Um, we have been an organization for seventeen years. I have led the academic work for eleven of those seventeen. We have made amazing impact, second semester work, because we go in targeted, we go in focused, and we grow, we grow teachers, and in hand, we grow students. So I, I would encourage you all to think beyond, well, that doesn't look like that's enough. Because what we do, we are side by side, we're in the classroom, and it truly can make an impact. Um, if there are certain factors in place, we work hard for those.
Sure.
We are trained for that.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
No problem. Dr. Simmons?
Mr. Chair, uh, so board members, I, I appreciate, um, you know, the robust conversation. And I, I just want to reiterate, uh, it is not my intent to present to you another program or another anything. Um, two weeks ago, I presented for you the CCRPI, College Career Readiness Performance Index. Um, I went back and I looked at the YouTube, and I saw your faces. And, and, and I, and I looked at the comments. Uh, and what I'm saying to you is where we are is not where we want to be. And what I'm saying to you is what we're doing today is not enough to get us to where we want to be. I respect and, and appreciate, uh, the, the questions. I think that helps us to be better. Uh, I think it helps to identify blind spots. But I respectfully posture. If you're okay with seeing red, then I would agree that what we already do is enough. What I'm offering is that what we're doing wasn't enough to prevent the schools from regressing. And we don't have the capacity at the moment to correct that in this timeframe and, and not ignore the needs of other teachers and other schools in the system. So that, that, that was the interest. Uh, so again, I, I, I look forward to continuing the conversation. Please don't hear me say that I don't think we can do what we are charged to do. What I'm simply saying is the time in which we are needing to do it, and the data that we're looking at right now gives me reason to believe that what we're doing is not going to be enough to stop that regression and move it back into the, the right or the positive direction within a two and a half month span time. So thank you for the conversation. Thank you for the questions. Thank you to Bailey Education Group for coming to Griffin.
Again, thank you all for having us.
And speaking with our board. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Dr. Simmons, and thank you, ladies, for coming and answering our questions. All right, we are now, now under action items. Um, under number seven, we're moving to item one now. Policy BCBI, public participation at board meetings. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this policy? It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And second it, is there any discussion about public participation at board meetings? When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four? District five? Policy is therefore approved. Next policy, policy GAG, staff conflict of interest. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this policy? So it's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth and seconded by Leader Holmes of the third. Is there any discussion? When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four? District five? Therefore, this policy is passed. Policy G A H B, staff political activities, second reading. What is the pleasure of this body? Second. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth, seconded by Leader Holmes of the third. Is there any discussion? When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four? District five? Approved. Policy G A K one, criminal background check, second reading. What is the pleasure of this body?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth, seconded by Ms. Register of the second. Is there any discussion? When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four? District five? Policy is therefore adopted. Policy GBA, professional personnel compensation guides and contracts. What is the pleasure of this body? It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Register. All in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Switch it up on ya. All right, five zero. Policy is approved. Policy GBBA, professional personnel qualifications and duties. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this policy?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Uh, all in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero, therefore approved. Last but not least, policy GCD, classified personnel here, hiring. What is the pleasure of this body?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. There's no discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Five zero, policy is therefore approved. Next presentation and discussions, December twenty twenty-four, monthly financial. Money Bag Yo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Y'all got me last again, so let's see if we can get through this real quick here. So again, as I told you last meeting, we've kind of had two meetings in a row with a financial report because of the dates of our calendar in December and November. So this is six months through the year. Your bottom yellow number is a, a balance sheet, which is fifty-five point seven million. Again, that's high for a fund balance. Uh, Hope told you at the audit meeting, it was forty-five. That was at the end of the year, but we've collected a, a majority of property taxes from Ms. Hollum. Uh, over to the right, nutrition is about three point six million at the end of December. Uh, our page two is our general fund operating statement. Middle of the page, year-to-date revenues, sixty-two million, uh, with fifty-two million in expense for a plus figure of ten point one million. Again, we're still collecting some, uh, property tax, taxes, but the majority of that has been collected. Page three is our grants. As I've told you before, the top yellow items are revenues, or accrued revenues, um, uh, to be received. The bottom is our expenses in yellow. If there's a negative at the, the very bottom, that means we need to draw some money down, or we're positive at, at the, the current operating time. And some of our, uh, grants, uh, are a little delayed getting, uh, approved at the state based on when they're sent in, uh, for DOE approval. So some of this, again, will self-correct. Uh, page four is our nutrition operating statement, about four point two million in revenues with expenses of about four point one million. So nutrition's to the good, about a hundred and thirty-one thousand, and that's, again, just through December. Page five, this is our, uh, funds that we manage at the State Investment Pool and some of our bond funds, uh, about, about a hundred and two million. Uh, if you'll go one item above the yellow on the left, forty-seven point three million. We've been spending the bond money down a little bit as we've had construction draws and stuff come in. We're spending our bond money down first. So that started around forty-nine point five million down, now down to forty-seven. Middle of the page, the rates, four point five, six percent. You know, I keep telling you, at some point, it was in the mid-fives. So that continues to come down, uh, in the economy we're in. And page six, our SPOLOX collections, SPOLOX seven, uh, about one point two million in November. Uh, new board members, I'll remind you that this is, uh, runs a, a month in arrears. So we're in December, but it's for the collection month of November. Uh, so about six million so far collected on, uh, SPOLOX seven. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions, board members? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so information items. Uh, just wanna pull your attention to your information items and remember our school system announcements that were done by Mr. Fletcher. Um, now we're on to governance team comments. Uh, we'll start with the senior member of our board, Mr. Holmes of the third.
Now, I, I, I would probably be offended by seeing senior. But, but I gladly accept that, because, uh, some, some folks tell me I look good to be a senior. But anyway, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. You go ahead and laugh, Dr. Simmons. But, uh, I, I just wanna say to the staff, you know, we, we in the full quarter of this grind. Uh, you know, I, I take it personal when, when people criticize our school system and, and, uh, what goes on in our school system when they really don't know all the facts. And, and I say this, and I stand ten toes down on it. As a public school system, we don't, we don't have a choice of who we educate. We educate everybody. And some of these systems that people compare us to, they, they pick and choose who they educate. Uh, uh, for one area, you look at our sped population. We, we receive students from surrounding counties that we don't turn down. We educate them. We educate them all. If y'all go and look in some of the sped classes and see some of the students, you, you'll probably be like most folks. How, how do they educate them? But we, we, we work it out. We have professionals who, 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 uh, pride themselves on educating those students. So I, I just want people to, um, um, really be educated, get the facts on what we do and how we do it, and, 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 um, the things that we do with funds. And a lot of people don't understand public education and don't realize that we, we work upon the mandates. We don't, we don't, we don't just go willy-nilly doing stuff because we think it, uh, something that sounds good, smells good, or feel good. Uh, the mandates come down to us. We have no choice. Uh, our funds are tied to those mandates. But let me get off that soapbox. Uh, but I just wish people would educate themselves on, um, what we actually do here and why we do it. But I, I just wanna thank our staff, because we have some people that work hard. Uh, they, they do the heavy lifting, and I appreciate them, uh, doing that. So, uh, with that being said, I look forward for us to do whatever we can do to improve student performance. We don't make no excuses. We just do it. And so I, I just wanna thank them and let them know it is recognized and appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. All right, next, we'll go to our, uh, second senior member of the board, our vice chair, Ms. McDonald. In years of service, in years of service, guys.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Um, I, I just wanted to give a, a shout out to, to my neighbors that are, that were here tonight. And I also wanted to thank the people that spoke to us, Ms. Gilbert, Mr. Ross, Mr. Barudin, Mr. Middlebrooks, and Ms. Burks. Just, uh, thank you for coming. And, um, Michelle, thank you for being here too, as one of my neighbors. We've got some big decisions to make as we move forward, of course. Um, but Sue McDonald will always do what's best for teachers, parents, kids, and employees. That's why I'm, that's why I'm in this chair. Thank you to all of our employees who are still here tonight, and appreciate everything you do for us on a daily basis. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
To Ms. Weldon of the fourth, board member comments. Just wanna thank everybody. Anything?
So I'd like to say thank you for electing me to serve as the board member for District Four. And I know during my campaign, I, uh, said that I would want to, to make a positive change in the school system, and that's what I hope to do. Uh, right now, I would like to propose that an external audit be done on the superintendent, his cabinet, and the central office employees. I would also like to propose that an audit be done financially to find out where we're overspending and where we can save our money. Now, I've spoken to several taxpayers and constituents and voters, and this is a big concern of theirs. And so I would like to get the ball moving now and see where we can go to make a positive change for our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Register?
Good evening again. I just, uh, wanted to echo, uh, what, um, Mr. Holmes said, um, about our staff and our educators that we do have, um, the boots on the ground, I like to say, in the schools. Um, I am a product of our school system. My husband is a product of our school system, and my children attend, um, our schools. Um, so I can speak to the caliber of the faculty and staff that we do have. Um, I believe that there are, um, there's a lot that we need to do as a community to support our school system, um, and not always looking at all of the negative and trying to focus on the positive to bring our enrollment back where it needs to be. Um, like I said before, as a product of our school system, um, and I, I believe myself to be a successful product of our school system. Um, I know what it can be and what it should be, and I know we can get back, um, to that again as long as we have the support of our community. Um, and I just wanted to, to tell my constituents that I hear you about House Bill five eighty-one. Um, I, I, I stand with you. I understand it, um, as a taxpayer myself. Um, and we, of course, don't take this decision lightly, and, um, I take your input very seriously. So, um, again, just thank you for, um, everybody being here so late, and I appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you. Uh, just wanna say shout out to Jordan Hill Elementary School. Congratulations on your school spotlight for twenty twenty-five for January. Also to Money Bag Yo, Mr. Jones. Thank you so much for all the hard work that you've put into the House Bill five eighty-one presentation. I've had a conversation with Dr. Simmons earlier, and I know that there was about at least twelve hours, you and him together, working, putting everything together. So I just wanna say thank you for your due diligence in, uh, making sure that we are prepared in order to speak to our constituents and giving us the information that we need to make these decisions. So to Dr. Simmons and to Money Bag Yo, thank y'all so much. Uh, also, it seems like we are all passionate about scholar achievement, making sure that our scholars are doing their very best and giving our educators the resources that they need. And so, um, you know, I just wanna appreciate and thank everybody for joining in on the conversation, because we can, we can learn a lot when we listen to each other. We can learn a lot when we come to the table and we talk things out. So thank y'all so much. And to the employees of the school district, just wanna say, uh, thank you for all that you do to help our school district to make it great and growing as we are here in Griffin Spalding. And, um, just want to thank all of my colleagues, uh, for what you do in our community and what you specifically do for your districts. Um, I believe that we are gonna get a lot of things accomplished with this board, and, um, we're looking forward to, uh, many more successes. And so, uh, we'll also, uh, yield to our superintendent if he has any governance team comments.
Just a quick comment. I'd like to acknowledge, um, one of our principals who's still in the room, sporting his, um, Travis Kelsey mustache. But, uh, he, he, he does represent... room sporting his Travis Kelsey mustache. But he does represent what we do from one day to the next. He does represent the feelings that Mr. Holmes shared. He shows up, and whoever shows up at his school, he does the best that he can to educate them. He worries when others are asleep. He sleeps, probably not enough if you were to speak to his family. So Johnny Mac, thank you for weathering the storm this evening and being here as long as you've been. And I know that you're representing the rest of the leadership. So thank you, sir.
We also have two educators that are with us as well who are in the audience. Shout out to the educators that are here with us. Thank you.
Shout out to the educators that I look right between. It was that mustache the whole time. So shout out to the educators. You know what you do. And don't forget, we made a challenge yesterday, but I know you'll come through. Thank you.
And I also want to give a shout out to one of our scholars in the audience, Mr. Zion. How are you doing? Happy New Year to you. All right, we do have executive session to discuss personnel matters. And so need to receive a motion to go into executive session.
A move, Mr. Chair, that we go into executive session. Could you give us the reason why? Again, you said person, I mean, legal matter?
Yes, sir. Personnel.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, it's been properly moved by Leader Holmes of the third. Is there a second? Seconded by the vice chair, Ms. McDonald of the fifth. All in favor, please raise your right hand and walk to the room to the right.